Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole meeting. This meeting is called to order, and I kindly ask our city administrator, Mrs. Dawkins, to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno here.
Burkhart?
Burkhart here.
Ruby?
Ruby here.
Caven?
Here.
Kilburg?
Kilburg here.
Kassarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Maladra here.
Marx?
Marx here.
McGowan?
McGowan here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our council meeting, folks, with the Pledge of Allegiance, and out of deference and unabridged respect for the lady who is providing cookies to the Girl Scouts, Alderman Ruby, and of course, I'm also happy to buy from Alderman Burkhart if they're still available. Alderman Ruby, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, my Girl Scouts graduated from the Girl Scouts.
Well, you know, I was wondering about that earlier because I was starting to feel faint and lightheaded. So, okay, so...
Because your thin mints are gone.
Ruby gets my cash.
It's all right. You were a good customer for many, many years. All of you were. Thank you.
I expect Hannah to be a pallbearer, so...
Oh, geez. That's awful.
Strike that from the record if you could. Ladies and gentlemen, Item 3, Public Hearings, Special Items and Presentations. Item 3A is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2022, City of Geneva and TRICOM Central Dispatch budgets. I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing for this and this purpose only.
Bruno so moves.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Caven. A roll call would be in order, ladies and gentlemen. Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're available.
McGowan. Oh, there you go. Thank you. Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing on the fiscal year 2022, City of Geneva budget and TRICOM dispatch budget is open for public comment, questions, concerns, or curiosities. I will ask our city administrator and our assistant city administrator if there's anyone on the line wishing to speak.
No one at this time.
Thank you, sir.
And no one has emailed.
If the council does not object, I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Bruno so moves.
Alderman Kassarog makes that motion. Was that Alderman Bruno that made the second?
Sure.
Roll call vote.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing on the fiscal year 2022, City of Geneva budget and TRICOM dispatch budget has been closed. Before we continue, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to read our, what has become a standard script with respect to our meetings. It has changed slightly since we've gone into Tier 1. Tonight's meeting is being conducted semi-virtually in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order limiting personal, in-person gatherings to lesser of 25 people or 25% of overall room capacity under the Tier 1 enhanced mitigation phase. For the City of Geneva, City Council Chamber, this provides for a maximum of 15 individuals who may attend in person. As such, you will note that several of the Aldermen are attending virtually and the remainder are here in person. Staff members are also participating virtually with the exception of the city administrator to my left and assistant city administrator to my right, who are necessary to be present to assist with the online and virtual experience. As a requirement of the Open Meetings Act, I am required to be physically present at the meeting location. This meeting may be viewed via live stream on YouTube or the public access channel on AT&amp;T, which is 99, or Comcast, which is 10, or by accessing the meeting directly through the link provided on the agenda. In addition, public comments may be submitted any time during the meeting to publiccomment@genova-il.us. Please note, comments received during the meeting will be acknowledged and placed into the record of this meeting but will not be read aloud during the meeting. Any questions or comments regarding that? With any good luck, we'll be changing the language of that announcement as well as we advance. Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen, is to proclaim February 2021 as Black History Month. I'd like to entertain a motion to so-proclaim. Alderman Swanson makes the motion.
McGowan so moves.
Alderman McGowan is credited with the second. If no one objects, I'd like to read the proclamation that all of you have in your packet, and it goes as such. Whereas during Black History Month, we honor the heritage and accomplishments of African-Americans and recognize their significant contributions to our society. And whereas African-Americans have made many contributions to our nation's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development, and whereas countless African-American leaders who have enriched our lives and shaped our national character have challenged us to recognize that America's racial, cultural, and ethnic diversity will be among our greatest strengths in the future. Whereas the foremost purpose of Black History Month is to make aware of the struggle for freedom and equal opportunity. In 2021, the theme "The Black Family: Representation, Identity, and Diversity" explores the American dias, excuse me, the American diaspora and the spread of black families across the United States. Whereas Geneva strives to be a just and inclusive community which lives up to the historical ideals of these United States and one in which all of its residents, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for contributions to our community, to our state, our nation, and the world. Now therefore, I Kevin Burns, Mayor of the City of Geneva, do hereby proclaim February 2021 as Black History Month and call upon the citizens of the City of Geneva to observe this month and encourage all to learn more about the rich heritage and stories of African-Americans who have con, excuse me, who have endured and triumphed over slavery, segregation, racial prejudice, and discrimination to enrich our communities while bequeathing to present and future generations vibrant examples of courage, faith, patriotism, heroism, and perseverance from which Americans of all backgrounds can learn and draw inspiration. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and the seal of the City of Geneva to be affixed on this first day of February 2021. With that, I'd like to take a roll call. Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're available.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. I'm also going to invite you to direct your attention to the screens, and for those of you joining us virtually, to your smaller screens. We have a special presentation tonight that I believe underscores not only the Black History Month in general, but the specific challenges we face as a society, whether it be locally, nationally, or globally. And I hope you take from this video some examples of what we teach our own children and how we as adults must never forget those lessons. So with that, Mr. McCready?
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., in a 1968 speech where he reflects upon the civil rights movement states, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." As a teacher, I've internalized this message. Every day all around us, we see the consequences of silence manifest themselves in the form of discrimination, violence, genocide, and war. In the classroom, I challenge my students to explore the silences in their own lives through poetry. We work together to fill those spaces, to recognize them, to name them, to understand that they don't have to be sources of shame. In an effort to create a culture within my classroom where students feel safe sharing the intimacies of their own silences, I have four core principles posted on the board that sits in the front of my class, which every student signs at the beginning of the year. Read critically, write consciously, speak clearly, tell your truth. I find myself thinking a lot about that last point, "Tell your truth." And I realize that if I was going to ask my students to speak up, I was going to have to tell my truth and be honest with them about the times where I failed to do so. So I tell them that growing up, as a kid in a Catholic family in New Orleans, during Lent, I was always taught that the most meaningful thing one could do was to give something up, sacrifice something you typically indulge in to prove to God you understand His sanctity. I've given up soda, McDonald's, French fries, French kisses, and everything in between. But one year, I gave up speaking, figured the most valuable thing I could sacrifice was my own voice, but it was like I hadn't realized that I had given that up a long time ago. I had spent so much of my life telling people the things they wanted to hear instead of the things they needed to, told myself I wasn't meant to be anyone's conscience because I still had to figure out being my own, so sometimes I just wouldn't say anything. Appeasing ignorance with my silence, unaware that validation doesn't need words to endorse its existence. When Christian was beat up for being gay, I put my hands in my pocket and walked with my head down as if I didn't even notice, couldn't use my locker for weeks because the bolt on the lock reminded me of the one I had put on my lips when the homeless man on the corner looked at me with eyes up merely searching for an affirmation that he was worth seeing. I was more concerned with touching the screen of my Apple than actually feeding him one when the woman at the fundraising gala said, "I'm so proud of you." It must be so hard teaching those poor unintelligent kids. I bit my lip because apparently we needed her money more than my students needed their dignity. We spend so much time listening to the things people are saying that we rarely pay attention to the things they don't. Silence is the residue of fear. It is feeling your flaws, gut-wrench guillotine your tongue. It is the air retreating from your chest because it doesn't feel safe in your lungs. Silence is Rwandan genocide. Silence is Katrina. It is what you hear when there aren't enough body bags left. It is the sound after the noose is already tied. It is charring. It is chains. It is privilege. It is pain. There is no time to pick your battles when your battles have already picked you. I will not let silence wrap itself around my indecision. I will tell Christian that he is a lion, a sanctuary of bravery and brilliance. I will ask that homeless man what his name is and how his day was because sometimes all people want to be is human. I will tell that woman that my students can talk about transendentalism like their last name was Thoreau, and just because you watched one episode of The Wire doesn't mean you know anything about my kids. So this year, instead of giving something up, I will live every day as if there were a microphone tucked under my tongue, a stage on the underside of my inhibition. Because who has to have a soapbox when all you've ever needed is your voice? Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may, just indulge you for another 20 seconds. I do believe, and I know all of you believe as well, that it's necessary to honor the contributions of not just black leaders in industry, art, culture, political science, education, and so on. But I believe strongly, and again, I believe you do as well, that we must also strive to reconcile the centuries of inequality our black brothers and sisters have been subjected to and continue to be subjected to in virtually every facet of American society. To honor the lives of black leaders past and present without the courage to acknowledge the role of subjugation past and present is, in my opinion, just pandering. So let us celebrate Black History Month 2021 and advance the respect, the inclusion, and the equality here in Geneva, nationally, and globally, that I believe all of you, along with me, believe is so urgent. Thank you. Item 4, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine. They can be voted upon and approved with one motion if such a motion is so desired. And I'm happy to entertain such a desirous motion.
Kassarog so moves.
Kassarog makes the motion. Marx makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're available, please take the roll.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Thumbs up from McGowan.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We skip to item 10, municipal bills for payment, and we kindly ask our city administrator to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $1,621,262.51.
Mayor, Bruno moved that we pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
There's been a motion by Alderman Bruno to pay the bills as presented, which also exists on our city website and in the council members' packets. Is there a second? Alderman Swanson makes that second. Any questions or comments regarding the bills? Ms. Dawkins?
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan? I saw the thumbs up.
The thumbs up?
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
The municipal bills for payment, folks, have been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We jump down to Item 12, Presentations of Ordinances, Resolutions, Petitions, and Bids. Item 12A is to consider approval of Resolution Number 2021-03, adopting the fiscal year 2022 City of Geneva budget and TRICOM Central Dispatch budget. Is there a motion?
Bruno so moves.
Well, that was like, what do you think, Caven? Bruno gets the motion, and Marx gets the second?
That's what I got.
Okay. There you go. Any questions or comments? Because we do have a present, a brief, some brief remarks by City Administrator Dawkins. Ms. Dawkins, the floor is yours.
This evening, the City Council is being asked to adopt the fiscal year 2022 budget. Development of the annual budget is more than just number crunching. A government's budget reflects its vision, strategy, and priorities. As presented at the Special Committee of the Whole meeting on January 11, 2021, the budget for your consideration reflects the council's priorities as discussed during the strategic planning workshop in November. In addition, the fiscal year 2022 budget is a balanced, fiscally responsible budget that keeps the city in a strong financial position. The total budget, which is all 37 funds, reflects an approximate 3.7% decrease over fiscal year 2021 with a 1.8% decrease in the General Fund. Highlights of the General Fund budget as presented on January 11 includes the continuation of the renewal license fee waiver for all of fiscal year 2022, which would be May 1, 2021 through April 30, 2022, the addition of a contractual social worker in the police department one day a week to assist city staff provide mental health services to our community, the ability to partner with other tri-city communities to support a Greenest Region Core volunteer to create a tri-city sustainability plan, a transfer of $10,000 to both the Beautification Committee and the Cultural Arts Commission, and transfers to the General Capital Projects Fund and the Capital Equipment Fund totaling just over $950,000. The proposed budget for SSA Number 1 includes funding for the additional, for additional recycling bins in the downtown area for a pilot program as discussed at the previous City Council meeting. The Infrastructure Capital Projects Fund, supported by a 0.5% non-home rule sales tax, contemplates $1 million for the annual road improvement program and continuation of other sidewalk, tree, and street scape maintenance programs. There is also funding included for storm, sewer, infrastructure improvements. It should be further noted that for fiscal year 2022, neither the electric utility nor the water wastewater utility are proposing a rate adjustment. Even in uncertain times, responsible budgeting in the past and a vision for the future provides the city with the resources to support the City Council's strategic priorities for fiscal year 2022. Challenges exist in planning and preparing for the future of our city, but I am confident that with the City Council's leadership, the current status of the city's finances, and our ability to pivot when needed, we are strategically positioned for success. The professional staff looks forward to working with the mayor and city council as we lay a solid foundation for our strategic approach to the future. This evening, we do have the senior management team available virtually, so if there are any specific questions regarding the fiscal year 22 budget, we are happy to answer those. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the dais here in Council Chamber? Anyone virtually, any questions or comments for either the city administrator or any of our directors who are joining us virtually? Seeing none? Sensing none? We do have a motion by Alderman Bruno, a second by Alderman Marx. A roll call will be taken. Ms. Dawkins?
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarog?
Kassarog, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan? Sorry. Yes. Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the City of Geneva fiscal year 22, City of Geneva budget and TRICOM dispatch budget has been approved unanimously. Congratulations to the City Council. Congratulations to our professional staff for building what is, I believe, arguably not just responsible but also forward-looking budget. So thank you all, and again, well done. Item 12B is to approve Resolution 2021-04, authorizing change order number 1 with Kahoy Pump Service Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $22,884 for well number 9 rehabilitation. Is there a motion? Alderman Swanson makes the motion. Alderman Caven makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
So Kahoy Pump Service, Inc. was awarded the contract for well number 9 rehabilitation back in November. At the time of the award, the City Council was made aware that if the motor could not be repaired, staff would be returning to the City Council for approval of a replacement motor. So the motor has been inspected and cannot be repaired. So this evening, we're with, before you with change order number 1 in the amount of $22,884, which reflects the purchase of a new motor, increases the quantity of certain bid items necessary, and deductions for bid items that have been reduced or determined unnecessary after the pump and motor were removed from the well. I do believe Superintendent Van Gescam is here this evening as well to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions from the City Council for Superintendent Van Gescam regarding Item Seeing none virtually? Seeing none AI? Just... Nothing, Brett? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Sorry. Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan? Can you give me a thumbs up? Thank you. Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, Item 12B has passed with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We are at the time for public comment and new business. I'll defer to Mr. McCready if there's anyone joining us remotely who wishes to speak.
No one this evening, Mayor.
Any emails to the public comment inbox? Ms. Dawkins?
No, sir.
McGowan so moves.
Ladies, Alderman McGowan, do you have a comment for new business? No? Okay. Anyone new business? Mr. Caven?
Thank you. I just wanted to throw a quick shout-out to the, all of the city staff and everybody. I know I was out fairly early yesterday morning after having our eight or nine inches of snow and even like in the downtown area and through a good majority of the city streets around. Thought they did a fantastic job yesterday with the heavy snowfall that we had to get everybody still be able to find parking in the downtown area for the shops and the restaurants and numerous of the other places that I had a chance to drive around in yesterday morning. So just, thank you very much for all their hard work.
Well said. Anyone else from the dais or virtually? Any new business or comments for the good of the order? Alderman Kilburg?
I took a walk today. I think that people need to be attentive to their fire hydrants. I know that we have bolts and stuff.
McGowan, aye.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So, I just think that residents need to look around and with the heavy snowfall that we've had and the additional snow that's projected for the end of the week, I think we need to dig some of these out. I saw some that were completely buried, so help out our fire department.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If there's nothing else for the good of the order, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this City Council meeting.
Bruno moves to adjourn.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to adjourn. Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're ready, please take the roll call to adjourn the City Council meeting.
Kassarog?
Kassarog, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Um, no, sorry.
Oh, can hear you now.
No.
Oh, we can hear you.
My computer's kind of screwed up.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Tonight's City Council meeting, ladies and gentlemen, is adjourned. Give us one minute to transition over to the Committee of the Whole. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, proud to open the Committee of the Whole meeting for this evening, February 1, 2021. I kindly ask our city administrator to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno, here.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, here.
Ruby?
Ruby, here.
Caven?
Here.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, here.
Kassarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Maladra, here.
Marx?
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Maladra, here.
Marx?
Marx, here.
McGowan?
McGowan, here.
Swanson?
Here.
Fantastic. We can hear you loud and clear, Jean. Thank you. Item two is to approve the regular committee of the whole minutes from January 4, 2021. Is there a motion?
Casarog, so moves.
Alderman Casarog makes the motion to approve the January 4, 2021 Committee of the Whole Minutes. Alderman Cavan makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding the content of those minutes as presented? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
The regular committee of the whole minutes from January 4, 2021 have been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item 3A is to consider ordinance amending Title IV, Business and License Regulations, Chapter V, Cable Communications, Article A, Pole Attachments, and Title VIII, Public Ways and Property. Chapter III, Utility Facilities Construction of the Geneva City Code. Sorry about the dramatic pause. My apologies. Ms. Dawkins, do you have a brief update?
Can we get a motion first, please?
I'm not interested. Is there a motion to so approve, ladies and gentlemen?
Bruno, so moves.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Swanson. Ms. Dawkins, sorry about that.
Okay. So the city has gradually moved away from a one-size-fits-all ordinance for pole attachments and supports individual pole attachment agreements as a better method of licensing companies to attach to a city-owned utility pole. With the approval of the last pole attachment agreement with Comcast, there is no longer a need for an ordinance specifically for cable communications pole attachments. The recommendation this evening is to amend the Geneva City Code to delete the cable communication chapter and to add a section defining pole attachment regulations for city-owned utility poles. We do have Superintendent Wright present virtually this evening to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Superintendent Wright? Alderman Casarog?
Does this in any way affect 5G and 5G transfers that might be attached?
No, this is Superintendent Wright, and it does not affect 5G. 5G is wireless. These are for wired attachments.
Great, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Comments or questions for Mr. Wright? Excuse me, Superintendent Wright? Seeing none, sensing none? Nobody here in the chamber? There's been a motion. There's been a second. Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Item 3A has passed with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Folks, public comment, new business. Mr. McCready, anyone wishing to speak at this committee of the whole meeting?
No. I went online.
Ms. Dawkins, any emails that have been sent?
No, sir. No emails.
Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, any comments, questions? Alderman Kilburg?
I just had a question. I saw that Lewis was doing some mulching. Was Lewis contracted to do some work in the city as far as branches and cleanup? I think they probably were doing some trimming around utility poles. Is that correct?
Lewis Tree Service is the city's electric utility tree service for line clearance this year.
Okay. I saw, I know Kramer that they're our contractor with them for the winter. I don't think we have anything in place with them, so I was just curious. Are they going to be visible throughout the community with their matching equipment?
Yes, they've been working for us for several months, and they'll probably be working for us through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Al.
Any other questions for the superintendent or any of the directors joining us virtually or the city administrator here in the chamber? If not, ladies and gentlemen, a motion to adjourn this committee of the whole meeting is in order. Is there such a motion? Alderman Swanson makes the motion. Is there a second?